Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Salem Township Planning Commission meeting, September 16th, 2024. They'll call the meeting to order at 7:34. If you'll please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have Mr. Hudson here. Daryl, would you be able to do the roll call, please?
You want for attendance?
Yes.
Art Khan, absent.
He's excused.
Okay.
Except Tom.
Frost, here. Hudson, absent.
He's excused as well.
Loibowski, here. Blockman?
Here.
Merle?
Here.
Chris?
Here.
We do have a quorum. That is good. Thank you. Approval of the agenda.
I'm in for motion to approve the agenda for September 16th, 2024, as submitted.
My second.
All those in favor of approving the agenda for the Planning Commission, September 16th, 2024, as submitted, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay. Public comment. If anyone has a public comment that is not, that is different from any of the public hearings, now is your time. None? Chairperson comment. Just one. I apologize for being late. Okay, new business items. Public hearing for 8860 Pontiac Trail, local conditional rezoning.
Would you like a brief overview of the proposal?
Yes.
Okay. So this is an application for a rezoning from local commercial to general commercial. The applicant has elected to submit a letter with conditions, which is permissible through the Zoning Enabling Act, which would allow them to apply for a rezoning and place their own conditions on that. The Planning Commission does not have the ability to change those conditions or place additional conditions on it. Typically, the intent is that if they're asking for a rezoning to a district that is not consistent with their master plan, the conditions that they place on it would make that conditional rezoning more palatable to the township. So in this case, they're asking for general commercial zoning in order to have their contractor's establishment there, which would only be permissible in that general commercial district and not in the local commercial district. There is a letter dated August 22nd with a list of conditions that the applicant has concluded. We, so this is on a, two parcels, two adjacent parcels. I think it totals four acres altogether. The letter of conditions was in your packet. They indicate that this site would be used as an office, a showroom, and storage for skilled trades. They did not explicitly exclude all the other uses that might be permitted in this district, which is sometimes something you might see here. It may be implied that that was the intent. They would use this area, as I said, for, they're still a trade company, so they would have storage and vehicles in the back. They would have a showroom in front with parking for customers. Sometimes customers would come to the office to have meetings or maybe look at some of the samples in the area. But generally, they would be dispatching their workers from that site with materials to go and do their work offsite. They indicate that there would not be any work done on site. They also indicate that the, they would comply with a local district preferred maximum of 4,000 square feet per acre. The district, the local commercial district actually says the maximum size for a commercial building should be 4,000 square feet, not anything to do with an acreage. They also indicate that they would do appropriate screening for the adjacent properties. So if you are all familiar with this site, it's on, close to the corner of Seven and Pontiac Trail. It's just to the north on the east side, past the party store. So surrounding this property to the east are some residential properties. Across the street, it's some agricultural residential, but could have potential of being some local commercial as well. And then the party store and the feed store adjacent on either side of Pontiac Trail. So this is a rezoning, which the township board has the ultimate authority to approve or deny. You all would make a recommendation to the township board based on the findings that you make from the zoning ordinance. And there are some specific findings that the zoning ordinance suggests that you go through, section 68.03. We have listed those in our report with some suggestions, and I would encourage you to go through those as you deliberate and make your decision. We introduced this last month, but because we, there was something that happened with the notification in the paper, so we had to redo that so we could have the public hearings. So tonight is the public hearing. You can take comments from the public, and the applicant is here to answer questions. I'm happy to answer any additional questions that you might have for me.
Sorry, I got out of my flow here. Okay. Do we have a? Do we have a motion to open the public hearing? Please?
I made the motion to open up the public hearing on 8860 Pontiac Trail for conditional rezoning.
Second.
At 7:42. Kevin seconds. All those in favor of opening the public hearing for the conditional rezoning for property 8860 Pontiac Trail, the local conditioning rezoning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Do I start off this lift?
No, just open up.
Just, okay. Is there anyone who would like to go first to speak on this? So if you'll please stand.
Okay.
Say your name. And your address.
My name is Robert Darkett, better known as Bob. I'm a 32-year resident of Salem Township. My wife and I raised our family at 8828 Salem Farms Drive, which is about a half a mile east of the subject property. I wanted to tell you that I'm very familiar with McCarter Construction from a few perspectives. One, now that I've retired, I frequently take kids to the McCarty Park, which is right next to McCarter Construction's existing facility in South Lion. I'm there sometimes for hours with young kids, and I can tell you that from what I've witnessed by the appearance of the property, the way McCarter keeps their existing property, and from what I hear and see, I believe that it's a complete and appropriate use for McCarter to locate themselves to 8860 Pontiac Trail. I actually think that it would be an asset, not only to the tax base of Salem, but I think it's an improvement to the existing property. I never, I actually walk by their office frequently with the small kids that I take to park. There's never anything offensive going on at that facility, other than what has basically been read about them storing some material and people being dispatched from there and then having a showroom. I can also say for transparency that I've had McCarter do work at my home, and they performed very well. The work and the coordination was absolutely top-notch. I think it's a good use of the property. So I support the zoning change. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm Ted Bowe. I live on 9593 Waldjean Road. I retired in 2015 from the Navy and Marines. McCarters were some of the first people we met when we were here. They were very active in the community. They facilitated us, you know, integrating in the community, very good friends. I've also had them do work on our house, editor roof. They did excellent work. Always known to be outstanding people in the community, and I did have an opportunity to review the packet last month, and I feel that it would also be an asset in line with master plan and what myself and my family would want to have Salem Township, you know, continue what we already have here.
Okay.
Congressman So, 9727 Waldjean. I'm kind of in line with what's been said already. You'll go by his existing property. Just a quick look by there, and you see that he maintains a well-kept place, real asset to the township, and I see no reason why against making that change.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seth McRobb, 98205 Mile. I'm not familiar with the company specifically. I've never worked with them. I've never driven by the property. My comment is more, a little bit more general. If a proposal such as this is in direct contradiction to the master plan, it should be the obligation of the applicant to demonstrate a sufficient benefit to the community to offset that contradiction of the master plan. And I have not had the time to thoroughly review their application. If the Planning Commission feels that they've done so, then great. If the Planning Commission recommends to the board that this be approved without that demonstration of community benefit, then I feel like all we're doing is supporting the precedent that this community tends to allow anybody to come in and do whatever they want, regardless of potential ramifications. Just in general. Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. Guess we'll close the public hearing. Do we have a?
Any motion to close the public hearing at 7:47?
Second.
All in favor? Yep, Kevin did it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep. He was a little quiet.
I'm sorry.
It's not like you. All those in favor of closing the public hearing for 8860 Pontiac Trail, local conditional rezoning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay, the public hearing is closed. Now it's our turn.
I have no questions.
I have some questions. I'll get to my. I know we have reviewed this before, and some of the things we discussed are that the Planning Commission cannot impose restrictions. That's up to the applicant. And the purpose that the Planning Commission has voiced in regards to going towards this route of a conditional rezoning as opposed to a complete, what do you call it?
Text amendment.
A text amendment, without a concern of what would come after this, any kind of, it's always unintended consequences of opening up and changing what was intended. And so we saw this as something that would be nice. It would be appropriate. We are looking at the intense use, the intensive use, how intense the use would be. We are looking at hours. We are looking at the foot traffic. We're looking at the impact to the neighbors. We'll look at the size. Sorry, I'm going to get to my notes. I just took yours. We don't feel that in regards to the conditions. Sorry, I lost my notes here. In regards to the findings. The size and location seem to be appropriate. It would definitely clean up that corner. There's no doubt that McCarter's, whatever I have seen that they've created or touched in the community has always been an improvement to the community. And in regards to the comments about if it contradicts the master plan, how does it contribute to the community? That's a very good question. In regards to cleaning up the community and limiting, having limitations on that as to what would come next or following that, that is why we were going about it this way. Whereas if we were to do a text amendment and say, all this can be, it opens that, it opens up all those options to all the other areas in the local commercial, and I think that was a big concern and was not the intent of all the whole local spots. We only have a few of them. We wanted to keep them small. We wanted to keep them appropriate, and this seemed to fit the bill. I think the hours of operation were to be Monday through Friday. Was there a time, were there times on here as well that I see? No?
I can tell you it's basic business hours, 7:00 AM to approximately 6:00 PM.
Go ahead, KJ.
I just, I knew it wasn't specifically written, and it was, it wasn't definitive if it was Monday through Friday, because it says predominantly, so it opens up to other days.
Saturdays.
We sometimes will have people come in the office on Saturday if it happens. It certainly is not often. Not as often as I'd like.
Oh, I have questions. Pet supply store up there, is that something that is allowed in local commercial or is it general?
It is a local commercial.
It is. Is it seemingly like it would be more of a comparison as opposed to a convenience?
Based on the description that we gave in the report, I understand that. I think that pet supply and feed stores were looked at as something that people would be accessing more locally. I can't speak to what the thinking was when that word was used. But that one is permitted, am I right?
Daryl, do you have questions?
No questions. I just think it'd be a plus for the area, especially the vacant buildings. It's been vacant for a little while, around a couple of years, I believe, from a small engine repair shop. Well, now it's just, it's vacant, and I think that'd be a great improvement.
No? I guess I would, I would like to see. Call me, it might be because our Planning Commission has been snakebit a little bit in regards to hours of operation and expansion. I would like to see a little bit more clarity around the use and the times on that. Only because we've been down this road before.
So there's nothing in the zoning ordinance that would address that in terms of general commercial district?
Right.
So that would, if the applicant was willing to make that offer of conditions, they could. But it does have to be, you know, we put the section from the state act in the report that we gave you. That would have to be a written condition offered.
Sure. I'm just voicing my concern because in my time that I've been here, we've seen predominantly this timeframe turned into 24-hour operations with growth. And I think everybody on here has seen on this board and some of the other businesses in the area. I think it's important to just clarify. I know there has to be some flexibility with business. I get it. You know, maybe whether they say like, not Sundays or not after these times, I don't know. It's, I just think there needs to be some clarification on there. I think Caleb is probably the perfect example. Everybody knows about that one.
Just wondering, can we add conditions now or would we have to go through? How would that work if we, let's say we decided we wanted to add conditions?
I mean, I think technically it's supposed to be in a written letter.
I got a pen. If I can comment a little bit, so.
Sure.
You know, we've been doing this for, I'm telling you, it's 34 years, and it's been the 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, for the entire time. And I understand if what the conditions are maybe, I don't want to maybe where one of my guys comes in at 8:30 in the evening because he worked a job late and it's trouble. You know, it's not the norm for sure, but it happens. And so I don't, you know, I don't want to get hogtied by that. And really, it's kind of the same thing on a Saturday morning, but that's not the predominant times. And so there's no intentions of being 24 hours. And we did amend the letter to try to answer some of these questions that popped up because growth was part of it. We've already started our growth thing. It hasn't been brought up. We already have another office in Rochester Hills. Our growth is not meant to be bigger here. Our growth is by going somewhere else to Lansing or somewhere. It's not, you know, this is our home base. This doesn't grow here. So if you would like us to put maybe a not, a non, no 24-hour operation, I think that's totally logical. But again, I don't want to make it where one of my guys rolls in and somebody's upset at him, and nobody wants that. And it shouldn't be necessary. As I said, we've been operating in the middle of this city of South. I realize the city of South Lion isn't exactly, you know, a huge town, but there's people all around me, and we've managed not to bother any of them. So I would contend that we're happy to put in there something of not to be a 24-hour operation to satisfy that, to put some limitations on this thing, if that makes sense.
I understand exactly where you're coming from. I'm a business owner. Everything is gray. There's an exception to everything. And I guess my thought is, we believe you. I believe you. I should say, I believe, I can't speak for these people. But as, in this role right here, if we could just get a little bit more clarification, I think in our community is incredibly forgiving. And a lot of times, if there's something, if there's a complaint, it says, I would never, I would never, I shouldn't say I was ever, I wouldn't expect you to say it's seven to six only, because that just can't happen. But I'm sure you can, yeah, well, I don't know. If we could get it tightened up, I know I can't ask you, but we've just seen it go south too many times, you know?
What if I just walk over to Paul and I write something down on that letter, though? And we go ahead and square it up?
You know, we can.
I don't know how to get there.
I'm sure you do, and that is certainly up to you. I'm just saying that we've been down this road before, and I think it's our responsibility to, we do have a, we owe it to the whole community to ensure that we're being fair to everyone that comes in, and I'm sure you can think of something creative that just puts a little bit more clarity around it. You know, I'm sure you're going to have somebody come in before, after, whatever, and you can find a way to put that in there. We'd be more than happy to look at it. How's that for being vague? And not telling you what to do?
Nothing overnight, you know, Sundays.
So what is the concern, though? I mean, specifically, you're concerned about too much traffic after 6 o'clock?
What we're concerned, what we're concerned is, and what we have seen on multiple occasions, is that people have, and, you know, they start out with something, and then business grows. That's, it either grows or doesn't, right? And when it does grow, I mean, Calo, they were going to just park their trucks there. Look at that operation.
I don't know what happened. I'm not familiar with that. So they're noisy. They've got big trucks.
They've had a 24-hour, they've had a 24-hour operation that has been very noisy, dusty, dirty. It's a whole, it's a whole nother issue, but that was never, you know, that was never the intent. So I guess what I would like to see when businesses come in, and especially for us changing something, you know, is there something you can put in there to give just a little bit more structure to it? Not like, I mean, I know it's not going to be to the letter, but just providing a little bit more structure. Paul, what have you seen in your, how people have put things?
Paul, do you mind if I come over and just make an amendment on that?
Well, I don't have a paper copy of it, but I would suggest if you give them an hours that they think are appropriate, and if you all decide to move forward, you can amend the letter.
We just don't want it to be another one.
Right.
Yeah, I was trying to.
And I agree. We just try to be flexible. We want to support our community and the businesses. We're not here to hold anybody up with any red tape. So I'm just trying to be careful and walk that line, not, I don't want to tell you what to do.
I mean, so if you're suggesting that you have standard hours of operation, that might be language that feels good to you. So if you want to suggest them and you all think that's a.
And there will be an occasional, but not regular, you know, I know we're getting the legal mumbo jumbo, which almost kind of screws up everything. But we do want to give some comfort to the community that this is still, it's in a But we do want to give some comfort to the community that this is still, it's in a, it's general commercial with conditions. But we still want to keep, the whole point of this is to keep our local commercial, local commercial. You know what I'm saying? Keep it that small-town feel.
I agree. That's what I hear.
And so I, I agree with what you said. It's just, if we could just put some structure around that. And I'm sure you'll think of something real quick while we probably discuss something else.
All right.
Sure.
More findings.
And can I, also I would say this, because if, if this rezoning goes through, this is the zoning for the property and the conditions that you've placed on it run with the property. And it doesn't matter whether it's John McCarter.
Right.
Or the person who inherits the business, or the person who buys the business from him.
Correct.
So that, that's why.
But that gets into the unintended consequences where that we get pointed fingers back at us and say, "Why didn't you think of this?" And we're sitting up there and it's like, we would love to have a crystal ball, but some people can be more creative than all of us at this point in time. And times change. People change.
Would you like to hear it now? And I'll tell you what it is?
Sure.
Okay, so what I'm, what I'm going to amend it to is that the hours of operation will be from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM predominantly Monday through Friday.
Standard, standard business hours.
Standard business hours.
Standard business hours, okay.
And not to be a 24-hour operation.
Do you guys work on Sundays?
No, go to church. You're all better.
He does.
I believe it. So standard business hours. Not be 24 hours. Whether ever, so would, so what you're saying is, I don't know, maybe.
If I go up there on Sunday, I don't want to get yelled at.
No, no.
I'm not going there on Sunday.
Okay, okay. You guys, I know it's getting a little nitpicky and that's really not your thing. What do you guys think of that? Do you have any concerns?
Yeah, it's something of change, you know, giving this general commercial thing, you do have to be careful with. And I actually think something, a business like this is fairly appropriate for local commercial because in reality, it's going to be the people that are in a small radius that are going to end up using the services and that would give them a lifetime of services really. Once you move into Salem, most people stay there until they improve their homes and stuff. I mean, I know it's not go in and get snacks, but it is, I think in reality, it's going to be a locally visited business. It's just the whole thing of the general commercial, I just, I wish there was something in local commercial that would show its compatibility a little more. But it does, it is going to serve the local community. I mean, it talks about the surrounding residential neighborhoods, unfortunately have almost none in the township. So our idea of local commercial has to be a little different, you know, than this, a city.
Yeah, there's no walking.
What was, right, what was, what was?
Half days, half days, maybe Saturdays.
They wouldn't have to state when they are? Yeah, I want to be careful on that. I don't want to create his business hours. So Paul, can you remind us again? How did, I mean, briefly, what was missing, why this wasn't local commercial? It's a tedious point.
It's just, it's, it's not one of the listed uses in a local commercial district.
So it's just what he's doing?
It's a contractor's establishment. And those, those show up in different zoning districts. And so that's, we could either, if, if this was something you wanted to allow in this district, we would have to amend the district to allow that particular kind of use, or they have to rezonate. So those are kind of the choices that were put forward.
To allow contractors. And then that's where things got sticky because we've gotten into whether it's lawn care, saw sharpening, and all that kind of stuff, right?
Sure, yeah.
It's repair. We already allow that. Repair stuff, it's allowed.
Yeah, I'd have to.
In local commercial.
I'd have to look at the plan and use table.
That's why the small engine repair is there.
Right.
Yeah, I just didn't understand that you could have businesses like them, like small engine repair and this repair, but not a place for contractors. They're not building anything. That would definitely be general commercial if there was construction going on.
But there's not.
But there's not.
Right. I'm okay. I looked through the findings. It is consistent. The size is consistent. Use is consistent. There's no impact to the surrounding properties that we've been able to see. I don't have any more questions. So.
I see we recommend approval.
Okay, maybe you've got the last little bit. Everybody good?
Ethan.
You're up?
Yep.
Okay.
I make a motion to recommend approval for proposed conditional rezoning for 8860 Pontiac Trail for local, from local commercial to general commercial based on discussions of the five factors identified in section 68.05 of the zoning ordinance and the following additional findings. The possible conditions will ensure the use is compatible with the surrounding use and the intent character of the area. The hours of operation. Can I add?
No, so that's not, that's not a condition. You're just talking about your findings right now.
Ah, okay. So he still needs to put that in writing?
Well, and this is based on his offer to amend that.
He can.
Okay.
So you could say, you could add that one that is based on his offer to amend that before it goes to the board.
Plus we put it in with the trustee meeting.
So go ahead and finish that.
Oh, that was it?
The standard business hours being Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And to not be 24 hours operation.
Sometimes on Saturdays.
Not Sundays.
Okay. Carol, you.
I'll second it.
Carol, second, it's okay. Can we get a roll call vote from you?
Frost?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Lockland?
Yes.
Merle?
Yes.
Rizzo?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I would like to revisit, though. We've got another meeting, we can revisit local commercial.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We put it on our planning, planning priorities. We can add that too.
Shouldn't be this difficult.
Well, we are, we are up to renewing our master plan, so we'll do that first. Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next. Hate double-sided paper sometimes. Okay, public hearing. We, Paul, would you like to give us an overview of public hearing for 7330 Five Mile Road Conditional Use, please?
Yes, I would be happy to. Thank you. So in your packets, you have, probably not the one I just opened because that's a different project altogether. There would be for just a second. Okay, so you have a report from us dated September 12th. This is from the applicant Anthony Fuller for a conditional use permit at 7330 Five Mile Road, otherwise known as Fuller Farms. It's an agricultural residential zoning district. And they're applying for a conditional use permit for a farm-based tourism activity on the property. In your packet, you have a minor site plan that shows the various use areas of the site. And there was also a narrative that was provided that gave descriptions of how they would like to use the property and the different areas and how they would be used. It showed parking up towards the front on Five Mile. All seasonal parking, so it would be gravel drive going into grass parking areas. They indicated that they would control parking with markers as opposed to doing any kind of striping or anything like that. We worked with them on their site plan to ensure that they had some bare-free spaces shown. But ultimately, folks would go from the parking area to the various use areas. They're going to have a concession stand, some U-Pick operations depending on the season, and some various other activities that I think the applicant would do a much better job of describing to you. And I would encourage you to kind of ask them questions to understand what the kind of level of intensity was. We haven't really gotten a clear understanding of how many folks might be coming in, in and out of there on a particular day. But it does appear that their intent is for seven-day-a-week operation during the, the growing seasons with some activity spaces, a barn that could be accessed by folks who are doing those various activities. The site plan, minor site plan appears to have checked off all the necessary items. We would be looking for some sign-off from the road commission that the existing drive that they have is appropriate for this proposed use. They're proposing use of porpoises for the public, and so we'd want to see the health department sign off on that as well. Let's see. Elevations and floor plans, I don't believe were provided specifically. And I believe we're doing, dealing with all existing buildings at this point. You've elected not to add the.
Just one is public use, the other two are private, but we are not adding any additional structure.
There are some screening requirements for this type of use if they're within 200 feet of a residential property, which, they are near a residential property, but the use areas are not within 200 feet of residential structure. They've indicated that the, the existing vegetation on Five Mile, they would like to use that for their parking lot screening. So that's something that you, as the planning commission, would have to determine if it's acceptable. And no exterior lighting is proposed, no grading is proposed. And then with all conditional uses, there are findings that you all should go through to ensure that the use is going to be harmonious and compatible with the surrounding areas. I'm not going to go through each one of them right now, but I would encourage you to go through those and make sure you're making your findings in order to approve or disapprove this. It should be based on those. And then ultimately, you can place conditions on a conditional use permit that you believe are necessary to ensure that this use will be compatible with the surroundings, that it won't be disturbing to the neighboring uses or hazardous, et cetera. So that's kind of the deal here with this one. A little different than the last one. You guys make final determination on this. But any, any conditions that you might choose to place on this should be in the interest of ensuring that this use is appropriate for the area.
So do we, thank you. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
I make a motion to open the public hearing, 7330 Five Mile Road for conditional use as of 8:17 PM.
Second.
Okay. Does anyone have any comments?
Mark Choak, 7171 Five Mile. I think my biggest concern would obviously be vehicular traffic down Five Mile. Pure road, it's dusty as it is. I think the plan is for over 100 parking spaces there, if I'm, if I'm correct. That's a lot of traffic on the seven-day operation. We've got three-seaters at Six Mile. During the fall, that traffic backs up. At 5:00 during rush hour, people circumvent that intersection and use Five Mile. There's a lot of traffic as it is now between 4:30 and 6:00. With a seven-day operation, over 100 parking spots, being the first house west of that location, not good at all. I don't think it's set up for that area at all.
Linda?
So you, as a community, as a planning commission, have always said that you support agriculture. The way that we farm is not long-term feasible in Salem Township. The average farmer can't come into Salem anymore and buy hundreds of acres of farm. The future of agriculture in Salem has been recognized here for decades as smaller, tight farming operations, something very similar to three-seaters. There's nothing in this proposal that makes this the scope of three-seaters farming. Absolutely nothing. Roads are made to be driven on, and you don't deny things because traffic might drive up and down the road. I'm the first person, I don't want any more traffic on my roads, especially when I'm hauling equipment up and down the roads. But traffic is not valid. If we are, if we are sincere in Salem Township, that we want agriculture to continue, this type of operation needs to be considered and approved. And as the local farmer, the closest large farmer, I support this operation. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Evening. My name is Alman Bradford. 7029 Five Mile, I'm working on a farm on Five Mile Tower Road. And I have to echo what my neighbor Mark says. And I understand what Linda says as well, but Five Mile is an unapproved road. It's pretty treacherous, especially upon year-round operation. It's over very easy. And it's dusty, and it's not really suited for something that is an attraction. And we already have receivers there. So what's the point of actually putting something in place? I want to welcome our neighbors to our neighborhood. We actually saw you guys actually putting something in place there. It seems like there's like a little loss of identity. You have horses there? Some weather monitors there?
That's not our, that's not our.
That stuff disappeared, and then now that this thing's out there. So we want to make sure that we maintain the rural character of, of the place. Something that we moved here to kind of take advantage of. And having an attraction there, it's not really a farming attraction, it's more like an educational thing. It seems like it's overkill. And it seems like Five Mile is not the right place. Again, the road's unapproved. We rarely get down there without getting dusty, driving regular cars down there. And it's a, since it's a road that's not really maintained, there's lots of problems. There's lots of problems up there. And I'm thinking that there's going to be a lot of tourism there. There's going to be people turning around, going in driveways, backing in, backing out, even driving on sidewalks. That just isn't happening around there. That probably isn't a place for something like this. So I'm waiting for my neighbor to say. Maybe I'll find a better spot to do it, be great. But I'm going to have to object to having something like this. I want to say thanks to my phone service manager, Senator Fox. I've served in here for 14 years and I want to operate in a way for you. Cool. Appreciate it. Thanks, Senator.
Yes, sir.
Yep, Jeff Berta, resident, 10 years, 7458 Tower. Couple of the same points about the road. I think the pilots are on that road already, some of the worst I've seen in the area. I think just adding 200 to 300% more traffic on those roads could not only cause more serious accidents or loss of control of your vehicles, not including the dust, but also the potential pedestrians, bikers, things like that on the road. Also, as we talk about agricultural, I mean, it's up to the hunter in the lower area. I'm a little concerned with what they would do to your surrounding areas, whether it's going to limit your controlled hunting or it's going to push back those zoning or that, that distance. And that would be of a concern as well for somebody that's. And that would be of a concern as well for somebody that's practiced safe and equitable hunting or the rules of the DNR. So those would be my concerns. I think the additional traffic, as well as, you know, your hunters, your agricultural, and your land ownership, your land supporters, I think that's where my vote would be at. Thank you.
I did one for the last one, I might as well do one for this one, too. Seth McRobb, 205 Mile. I just wanted to state that I wholeheartedly agree with what Linda said. More ag is always a plus, and large-scale agriculture is just not feasible long-term because the price of property is just too high. And if y'all are really worried about cars driving on a dirt road, maybe buying out a farmhouse on a dirt road.
Anyone else?
Can I just ask a question, Alman? There was a paper that Mark received in his mailbox for this particular conversation. Al and myself, local neighbors, did not receive that. My question would be, how many neighbors in the surrounding area did receive that in their mailbox? Thank you.
So the notification requirement is property owners within 300 feet of the subject property.
Of the property line or the housing?
Subject, of the property line.
Linda.
Just a follow-up comment to the comment about buying houses on dirt roads. If the Forests were to develop their farm as a subdivision, they could have roughly 30 homes on it. There's 60 acres, there's a two-acre minimum out where we live. The average home has 10 car trips a day. That's the time cars drive up and down the driveway and leave your property. You have teenagers dealt with because today they can't walk, grab us out, without being on your vehicle. So if they were to develop their farm and put just 20 homes on it, those 20 homes have 10 car trips a day, that's 200 vehicles. They're going up and down Five Mile Road. The road is built by the road commission, not by the local property owner, not by the local township. And the road, the dirt road, and it's actually, I think, in better condition than it's been in a lot of years. I usually go up and down in the speed at which I pull my implements, based on how many bumps I have to go through. But again, to keep it as a farm of any type, is a lot less traffic on the road long-term. And also, agriculture is the only zoning class that pays its way. Farms don't send children to school, they don't go up to the library and borrow books, they don't use intermediate school services, they don't use county services. And so again, if you start to put homes in there, and if people can't farm their land, they can't find a way to make it economically viable. The option is to develop your land, it's to sell to a developer. And when that developer comes in, he's not going to care about the neighbors. They never do. And so I think that, again, the consideration here should be, is this in keeping with the intent of Salem Township to keep agricultural land and agricultural production? And I believe it is. Thank you again.
Yes, sir.
Isn't there requests in line with the right to farm?
We'll have an opportunity to address, I believe.
Do you do that now?
Whatever it is, it's fine. I just want to make sure we do address it.
Sure, you can ask him for a presentation if you want, but you can close the public hearing.
Okay. I don't know if I need to be inside or outside the public hearing. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing for 7330 Five Mile Road for conditional use as of 8:27 PM.
Second.
All of us in favor of closing the public hearing for 7330 Five Mile Road, conditional use, say aye.
Aye.
Close, none. Would you like to make your presentation?
Absolutely. So I want to start by just explaining why we feel it is in line with the township or zoning master plan as well. Honestly, you guys nailed it right on the head when you wrote this excerpt in there, where it says, "The proposed uses are consistent with the intent to promote agriculture, rural lifestyle, farm product sales, preserve rural open space, enhance the local agricultural economy, expand the range of revenue sources from agriculture, improve understanding and knowledge of agriculture among non-farmers, and/or diversify the type of farm products available to consumers." That is literally to a T what we're trying to do with this property. We, three-seaters, have been mentioned several times, so I'll bring it up. Zero intent to be that type of operation. It's run by us two, our retired parents, and a couple other family members. So when you're comparing it to something to that extent, that is not the scope of what we are doing. Outline in our documentation is hours of operation. The reason it's listed as seven days a week is because it's completely dependent on Mother Nature. If I have something that's in full bloom on Monday, I can't really wait till Saturday or Sunday to host that crop cycle. So we don't intend on operating seven days a week. We're not fully open to the public, also stated in our documentation. It's a tiered entry structure of X amount of cars per hour. So it's not, we got a line of cars backed up because, to be quite honest with you, we don't have the staff to accommodate that. We have two small kids. We're not intending on this to be a 24-hour operation, anybody can come and stay as long as you want type deal. So we are bringing people in on a timed structure, X amount of people per hour, to exactly limit that concern, because we have a couple parking attendants that will keep people moving through. The intent of backing on Five Mile Road is definitely not outlined in any of our plans. So I don't want it to seem like we are trying to become that. So yeah, I mean, to say also that we have a loss of identity. We were growing crops actively. We bought the property two years ago. We did not immediately try to jump in and host a bunch of events for people. We farm first, and we grow pumpkins, we grow flowers, we grow things that we want to share with the community. So in order to do that, additional revenue sources are always going to come up, and that's why we're intended to do this. And we feel it is in direct line with the zoning master plan. And also, as it's been brought up by Linda, I mean, we have 62 acres. You know, something has to pay the bills for that. We want to preserve the land. One of the key points to do with preserving the land, educating people about farming, that's exactly what we want to bring to this community. You know, it's not the intent to be an amusement park, it's the intent to be a working farm that people can come enjoy.
And I understand also the fear of the grid, because we deal with the traffic, too, with three-seaters. I totally understand that. We're talking lavender farms down the line, we're talking pumpkins in October. We're not talking a massive-scale operation. We have, in our plan, we have all of our activities, they're very much handmade pumpkin toss, pumpkin bowling. We're not getting bounce houses and all of that. Our concessions is a little cider and donut truck. So we're not, we don't want large-scale. I don't want to deal with that many people myself. We just want something to bring to the community that we, as parents with two little boys, and we were taking them and driving them all over the place to try to buy them small farms so that they could get outside and enjoy nature. And so we kind of thought that this would be the thing for them to grow up to, they're now to work hard, and we want to open that to the community and say, if there's children in the community, and their parents and grandparents can bring them. But all small-scale events, we don't want to get, we don't want big. We don't want a lot of people. We want people to enjoy the peacefulness of the area that we enjoy.
And also, one more, the year-round operation, not the intent either. The only reason it is structured that way is because, depending on the crop cycles at that time. I wish I could give you a definitive time when this is going to be in bloom and this is going to be available. I cannot provide that because Mother Nature changes things without notification. So we are not going to be a seven-day-a-week, come whenever you want, 52 weeks a year. The only reason it's structured that way is because we do intend on having crops that are available in the spring, that are available in the summer, that are available in fall, with gaps in between. We can't, you know, we're not doing a seven-day, open, high rate.
You pick lavender, very small-scale farming, you know, but not something that lavender, you know, that's...
It blooms for two weeks and then it's out.
Yeah. Our sunflowers have been up in the last, our first round of sunflower will probably die by next week. So yeah, it's not a year-round thing. It's lavender season, if it's, you know, maybe strawberry season down the line. We love to do pick strawberries, but it's, we're not looking for like a big carnival production or a big, you know, we're just trying to bring back farming. And as he said, yeah, we have 62 acres, we are trying to farm that land. If we can't farm it and we can't do anything with it, I mean, it's just...
That's why we're here to the community, because it's self-performing farms.
Yes.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to start with some questions? Are there discussions about...
Yes. I feel, I've been born and raised in a country, in dirt roads. And I feel, when you go out to Westland, it used to be farming. Now it's all blacktop and cement. And I, if you're a small farm on Five Mile, I have no problem with it, because I live here in Salem. I drive on the dirt roads. I have a white vehicle, so you know, you'd think a person would stay off of the dirt and sprite on the blacktop. But no, I think it's a plus to try and save the farm, as to see and try and visualize, well, it could be 40 homes in there, you know, and then, of course, the original few people would be gone, and that. So I'd rather see something of this nature. It's not a grand-scale, a big production over there. It's going to be as the season allows you to do things. And I think it's a plus for the area.
Go ahead, Al.
Yeah, we just wanted to make some points. Yeah, the dirt road situation, there's always a problem. But people have to understand that when they come out to Salem Township, that these two-acre properties are residential ag. I think a lot of people forget that. It's residential ag. And I'm for the farm, but I also understand concerns with the road. But as far as, I mean, you may have growth, you may have tourism growth, you say it's only going to be this big, but it could get bigger. And the other thing is, you've got like White Lotus Farm out in Ann Arbor. They're now open year-round. You know, they got their microgreens, they got a little bit of bakery stuff, so there is a possibility. And again, I'm all for it, but I just want to point out a few things. It could turn into a year-round operation. But again, everybody has to understand that when you come out here, it's residential ag mostly, with the two-acre minimum lots. And I just wanted to point that out. It could end up being a year-round operation. I don't have a problem with that, but it's just things I want to point out. And it could be a much larger operation eventually. Just wanted to throw a few things out there. Paul, this might be some on you. Does this, being this many parking spots, do we have to have emergency access to this property?
He did, as the... He did. I know the fire chief went out and looked at the property, evaluated the barn. I don't think we got anything specifically inviting from, but I know that he worked with Mr. Fuller.
What, he hasn't said anything to you about that?
No, he gave us some parameters with the barn interior, and he looked at our food truck as well, and gave us some, it was all good. So yeah, he was very supportive and positive. And the building, the building director came with her, too.
How about any, did he talk about any fire suspects, you know?
As long as we're under 49 people in signage, adequately saying so, there was no type of fire suppression needed for inside the building. We did have to upgrade our, we had just a small fire extinguisher on the side to a three-pound, but other than that, no issue, as long as we kept it below the national threshold, which is 50 people. So 49 people are below, inside the barn area, not for the entire property.
Right, that's what...
Yeah.
And did he talk about any kind of ready water source or anything?
No, sir. There are two water sources within the barn, so he...
Okay. He was there with that?
Yeah, yeah, he was there with me for a couple hours.
What you're saying about the water source? In the barn?
Too close to the barn in case something happened, you know? That's kind of what my thinking was, or any of these outbuildings here. Kind of pumping system from the pond or something. He didn't...
Sure. He didn't mention anything of that. I mean, he did ask if we were storing hay, which we are not, so that was his one-fire question.
Right.
So yeah, that was it. But like you said, he was out there for a while, we talked through a lot of stuff, so I wouldn't be surprised if he did look at that. Someone would like to maybe see that floor or something from you. What do you think, Paul?
So how far is the proposed farm from your neighbors? What's the distance from Five Mile from your neighbors to your farm?
And they can speak on it as well, but I believe the gentleman who's on the corner of Five Mile and Tower, there's a 10-acre parcel between us, and the home that we own is also about, I mean, 30 acres that we're not using currently.
Yeah, but how long down the road? What do you, if your neighbors are a mile?
A thousand feet. I mean, over...
Over a thousand feet.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so...
I got an I-6, if you want to look at it.
The only thing I was thinking for your neighbors, can you calcium chloride the road? Can you do something with that area if you're close enough altogether?
I don't believe we're an obligation to do that as far as the vicinity of a property, so...
Tower Road.
I mean, if that makes a difference, I don't think we should do that, to be honest with you. I think that opens up a lot of more further requests from us, where we are pretty much very firmly in line with the master plan.
Well, I know, with your neighbors, it does...
I understand. I'm not sure what the process entails, so I can't commit to something that I'm not familiar with.
Bruce?
Just on the front of the road, the road condition, there's nothing in the way to look at the road.
It's not ours.
We have zero control on what happens there. It's strictly road condition. We can't even, you know, if we find enough in the road, we can't get rid of some of this road. So yeah, if you're going to do something, that's fine, but it's strictly in the road conditions, or involved due to that, or not, or something.
Linda. And in the same vein, when you start to talk about the fire chief and fire services, there's fire code that tells you what you have to have for buildings of a certain size and a certain capacity. It is not up to the opinion of any one individual. And so this whole submittal doesn't trigger anything under NFPA 1 or NFPA 101. And that should be the question from the table, not what does Jim Rockwell think. But again, there are codes, and there are codes for a reason. The purpose, it's the same reason he has his own ordinance. What are the rules and how do we play by them? Not somebody's opinion. So if you have a concern about NFPA 1 or NFPA 101, that's fair, but not Jim Rockwell's opinion. Thank you again.
Well, fire codes, just like anything else in the health department. You know, all that's out of our control, and it's up to them to meet their requirements, Once again, I'm just going to bring up the same issues I brought up in the last public hearing, and I understand that what the intent is.
Sure.
However, it still comes back to what will happen. And so... And so when it comes to parameters and use intensity, I think that's a big deal. You know, if you're looking, what I saw in here is of all the acres, only six point four is going to be used for your tourism, right? So out of, what is it, sixty, out of sixty-two, you're going to use six point four.
The remaining is agriculture.
Right, I do understand the neighbors' concerns because I under, yes, it's agricultural, but now once you throw that tourism there, it becomes commercial, and as soon as it becomes commercial, that's why the neighbors are interested. They do have to live there, so all these things coming out are important for discussion. Any kind of cider, donut truck, that's health department stuff.
It's not licensed.
And I think if you're gonna put, uh, if somebody were to put some sort of intent in there, um, you know, a clear description would be nice.
As far as intent.
Of all the intents that you stated right here, we're not, probably will clear in this one.
Um, I, they're, they're, they're centralized eleven pages, they are.
Right.
Clear in there, uh, what we intend to do with the property has.
We assumed.
Any clarification, I'd be one of the happy to clarify that.
And I guess we assumed if we were ever thinking of even expanding, that's what's in there that we would be back in being with you. I mean, this is literally what we want to do, and yeah, if we, if it had to expand, I would assume that we would have to come in and revisit all of it.
Yeah, I can't assume we can increase anything without coming back here.
You know, if you wanted to make explicit, you could make compliance with their proposed narrative a condition, right? So they've given you a site plan, they've given you this narrative, I think that you could make each of those conditions if you want to be completely sure that they will stick to that and on page.
This is a minor site plan, it's, it's not, so it's not the full one, so there's a little bit there to go.
Yeah, but like on page twelve of their narrative, they go into different hours of operation for a variety of different uses.
Mine stops at ten. Okay, I saw that online, but I can't. And I, I understand that, you know, the blooming and all that kind of stuff is based on that, so that's the beauty of it. Just from the other side of the fence and with the neighbors and whatnot, we want to ensure that we do our due diligence to hear exactly what you have to say, what your plans are, and then of course poke holes in them if they're.
If we were to cut Monday, Tuesday off of that and be a maximum five day a week operation, is that something that would appease anyone? I mean, again, I'm, I'm at the mercy of mother nature with that stuff, but typically our volume is going to be that later in the week, so is there, I mean, is there anything?
I don't think any of us are opposed to farming, agriculture. That's not the, the message that we wanted to.
Of course.
Okay, it's the, you have a hundred plus parking lot that you have proposed. And you're gonna have, it's an attraction, I saw pictures of a, some bowling, pumpkin bowling, whatever, so it's, it's just not farming. You're not just farming here, so there's an attraction.
It's a conditional use as an accessory to the farm.
So if you have over a hundred parking spots and you.
So I think I'm gonna interject here just a little bit, and I think what we're talking about is the same thing we always talk about when it turns commercial, is the intensity of it, that's what everyone is fearful, whether it's Waljean's Road, you know, or I saw the Waljean's people, I'm like, oh my goodness, what's going on now, how does this apply? And, and if somebody's gonna do some pumpkin bowling with, with some school kids or whatnot, I don't, I don't think that's the issue. So we have to be careful in painting with a broad brush, it's the intense use. And I don't know if, I mean, if you cut two days off, now you just, you said you're at the mercy of mother nature and then. So I think it's the size of your, of your operation, of what you're going to do and any, any limitations on that. So what you explained sounds very good, just let me finish one second, but their, that's okay, but their, their concerns are what comes after that, and maybe that's, just so you understand, so you guys talk about that another time.
Well, also, I mean, is it something we can talk about seasonally, so right now we have pumpkins growing and sunflowers that we've already been farming and spent a lot of time this year, all year, fricking. And so this year, the thought would be we would be open for a couple weekends on a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, you know, twelve to four, twelve to five, and then that would be it for the season. And then we revisit in the spring and say, okay, we want to do some wildflowers now, we want to grow lavender now. Um, we're not talking about being open, you know, we open up tomorrow and we're open Sundays, we, we do like three little weekends, you know, and so maybe, maybe we do it, I mean, I don't know if that's.
So when you have a plan, I'm sorry, I'm gonna interrupt again, so we get it, so. When we, um, I don't mean to be rude, I just try and things long, I get in trouble for being too chatty, but, but it's, I think it's the parking and all that, so when you're, what you're saying, and when the, these guys are looking at, at the plans, it looks like.
It does maybe come across that way, but honestly, this scale compared to something like three seaters is probably five percent of what the volume that they're doing.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, like an Ossie-Bon orchard type, type scale, a hundred spots might seem like a lot, that is, it, it's not the intensity. It's thirty people an hour, thirty cars an hour at maximum.
So was that in, that was one of my questions I took and noted, you guys had it tiered as, just out of curiosity, I mean, agritourism is good, kids being outside is good. So when you said it's tiered, did you put, there's a lot of stuff in here. Did you put like what your tiers are, like what you just told me, like so many cars, was that in here?
Uh, I believe so, but if it is not, I have no problem adding it because it's a, it's an hourly entry, uh, you know, with X amount of cars per hour, because we don't have a large parking lot, I know it might seem large, it is very small. The scale of it is very small.
Yeah.
I, I understand it might not come across that way, but I promise you it's.
Yeah, just one second. So Paul, how far do we need to really get into all this? I mean, as far as like, I mean, it's very detailed, it's a minor site plan. You know, you're looking at the pond and, and all that, all those details will come out in the final site plan, whether there's a fencing around it or anything like that.
Minor site plan is, that's all they're doing here, so.
Okay.
They won't come back with a final site plan, this, this is.
This is the site plan that they're required to provide. So you, you won't get another bite at this hour.
Oh, okay.
Unless you, unless you request changes now.
Okay.
So. I was just gonna say, if you had specific hours of operation, items that you wanted to add here, you could, you could add that as a condition yourself.
Those are not listed in here.
I don't, I don't see the tiered approach listed in here specifically.
I didn't see that either, but.
But there, there are hours listed for, for various different activities.
Ten to four.
Well.
And then possibly seven.
Seasonal.
Says, general hours of operation guidelines will be to adhere to during all times of the year, which are.
Page twelve, right?
Yeah, we're at page twelve, yeah. Bottom of page twelve, top of page thirteen.
Linda, yes, go ahead.
So your own zoning ordinance, if we look at that, which should be the prevailing document today, not everybody's feelings. Roads, first of all, a roadside stand that sells farm products is permissible. They want to sell lavender, pumpkin flowers, according to this, it's permissible. I want to have a U-pick, permissible. So what we're talking about here is not can they farm and can they sell their product on their farm? You're talking about the fact they got some type of tire thing for the kids to play on while the parents are picking. Or you're talking about they got some type of bowling thing between bales, again, something they have the kids. So then we go, that's in your chart, that's page twenty-three, if somebody would actually like to look at the zoning ordinance, see what's allowed, then if we go to page forty point two, farm-based tourism, entertainment activities or farm markets. Here's what they're subject to, it talks about they're consistent with the definitions of farm-based tourism, entertainment activities for the definition. They're limited to the following, agricultural festivals and events, farm-based or seasonal recreational attractions such as a petting farm or play area, I think that's what the tires and the bowling thing is, it's the play area per your ordinance. Corn mazes, hayrides, seasonal displays, you know, a winery or cider mill, farm-based educational center, and indoor/outdoor facilities for group gathering, can have accessory food and retail sales provided that the facilities are incidental in characters compared to the overall parcel size and scope of the permitted uses. Certainly what we've heard tonight is incidental to a sixty-two and a half acre farm. Then I can have a farm market, I already told you, that's permitted, they don't have to come see you, they don't have to do anything. They have the right to have roadside stand per your ordinance, they have the right to have U-pick. Similar facilities and.
I don't think we need to read all of that, Linda, because, no, no, because it's not your time.
I'm not gonna read anymore, I want to, here's what you can do. It says you can address noise level, ask at the property line, it says you can address lighting, and then it said, as you guys were discussing with Paul, you can set the hours of operation, that's what your ordinance says.
Correct, and so one of the things that we're doing here is having a conversation through a thirteen page document to have a clear understanding, it's important that we ask questions, so we're not just reading the words and maybe things were left out. Maybe we thought of something new when we were reading this online or on paper, wherever it was. We, everybody here absolutely supports it, that's not the issue, we should be able to ask questions and discuss to ensure that our ordinance is being met.
Absolutely, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay, I mean, I know it's in the law of use, and for me was, would be to have some type of hours of operation and, and how long it's going to operate, and we went through that with three seaters a long time ago, and had two or three hours of operation and how many days they can be open. The one thing I did want to just ask about was on, on this big site plan here. There is a pond.
Correct.
And is, there'll be children there, so what, is there fencing around it?
Yes.
Is there, what, is the depth that, yeah, I did.
There's a very large area separating the pond from any activity, and actually, it's completely fenced off between the barn and the pond. So where the activity and the tourism is happening, uh, it's completely fenced unless you were to walk through a private side barn. There's no gate, nothing that leads to the barn, it is completely fenced off all the way down.
We have two young boys, so that's a big concern for us.
Bodies of water and groups of children.
Absolutely, that was something we related to.
Yeah, yeah.
It's from the tourism area to the pond is a continuous fence, as seen on the document set.
It's a little hard because it's very, very concentrated, it's all area.
I know, I know, that's the, that's the thing, it's such a large parcel, we're using such a small portion of it. Um, so we did provide a twenty-four by thirty-six copy, I don't know if that's any more clear.
So back to, um.
And we would be happy with a conditional approval, you know, we can, we can accommodate anything that, we're not, we're not.
We're just trying to be thorough, nobody's against what you're, everybody likes what you have and.
We've been talking to you guys for two years now, they're probably sick of it.
Yeah.
We're trying to be thorough and do everything the right way.
Right, and, and, you know, if we knew the answer, right, before you even came here, we knew everything and we just read the thing, okay, here you go, but we don't. You know, with the more we talk about it and discuss it, so we're different than, say, a board that's gonna come in and approve checks and all that stuff, you know. Um, the more we get out and the more we talk and communicate with, with your neighbors and, and the community, I think we come to a better resolution, so. I, I guess I'm still looking at, you know, you have on here seasonal, and it's just out of curiosity, so we know how that impacts like with lighting, what it impacts with noise and, and whatnot, so that's why we talk about the intensity. So there's not, you don't have anything with your lighting, right? So.
No additional lighting.
No proposed lighting, okay. I didn't know if it was proposed or it was missed.
No, 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 no.
So no lighting, once it starts?
No, yeah, we're honestly, we're closing last admission at four P M. and everybody's gotta be out by six is what our intent is for the season.
Okay.
We have two small shelters.
Wait, what about seven thirty?
That'll change. And your standard operation will be during all times of the year, did, I didn't really see anything with like, like a winter time thing. What is, anything going on in the winter time?
We currently don't have anything proposed for the farm, we do have a home-based photography business that's already licensed through Paul, it was a, a permitted use. Um, so we will possibly do a Santa photo shoot of some kind, but that's very small volume, it's not something.
Private family coming in, they can.
On the farm side, it's a completely different application that we had submitted last year. But no, nothing during the winter, Christmas trees take fifteen years to grow, so.
Yeah.
It's not something we have, but.
Well, there's the tourism part, you know, what comes next, and you talk about winter, so then it gets dark earlier.
Sure.
So it wouldn't be seven P M.
Right, and those are all things.
So that's like, where's the lighting for safety and things of that nature.
Yeah, that's why the hours of operation have guidelines but weren't stuck in concrete, because there are different times. They will be adhered to those guidelines, we will never deviate from those guidelines, but it depends on the time of year, the season, all of that.
Sure.
And if there's no agricultural aspect, we're not going to be hosting. The whole point is to host the, around the crop cycles of whatever crops we decide to add and expand our season, but it's not like, hey, it's a random Sunday, we want to have, you know, an event, but it's not the.
Okay.
We want to farm the way on.
Sure, and we, you did state that, I'm included with your hours of operation, so, okay. Did anyone else?
But the intent would be for, you'd be open more than just May and then September, October, it sounds like.
So as of right now, as of right now, uh, we are again at the mercy of crops, so, um, lavender is typically planted in the fall and it won't bloom until another, possibly even year and a half, so with taking the land that's not currently farmed and converting into fertile soil and being able to plant, um, that stuff takes a lot of time. So we, we focused on pumpkins and sunflowers first because that's a finite time where you plant it, it's blooming in the same kind of season. Strawberries take a year, lavender takes over a year, so we are at the mercy of that and we can't, you know, explain what is coming next, but that's where we're headed. Because strawberries are in June, lavender's in July, and then fall is, sunflowers and pumpkins are in fall.
We're also, we're not experiencing, they don't come from farming, um, so we're learning all of this. So we're not, by next year, we're not gonna have thirty different things growing. Right now, we've got pumpkins, we've got sunflowers, we figured those out, uh, last year we planted sunflowers, the deer ate them all, that was, that was that. So we're learning as we go, so we have no problem as well saying, okay, next year, this is something we'd like to add and do we need to come back and revisit that and say, hey, now we want to do strawberries, now we want to, but right now, we have pumpkins and sunflowers. You know, we have the next month of crops.
I apologize for the length of the document, it's just, we've been talking about it for so long and I wanted to make sure that I had covered all of our bases.
Yeah, no, it helps answer a lot of questions. No, no, everything's good, it's nice, go ahead and ask Paul that.
Paul, how specific?
Is this document two?
As far as, um, you know, not just hours of operation, but, but times of the year, the months, should it be more specific or just, or left as it is on pages twelve and thirteen? Or left as it is on pages twelve and thirteen?
Well, it seems pretty... It seems pretty specific.
It's very specific.
Sounds like the growing season.
That's not going to include anything in June, July, August. It's mentioning specific.
Well, so like I said, you could either add some conditions of your own or you could condition your approval based very specifically on this document. In which case, they then, as applicants, would have to come back and amend that if they were doing some of these activities. And so it's not the U-Pick that they're asking for permission for. It's the value added after the U-Pick. Right? So they're doing events where they're helping people put bouquets together and things like that. So that's more of what they're talking about. So like, if they have a strawberry operation, it was just a U-Pick and you came and filled a basket, that would be a permissible use out there.
Okay. So this wouldn't limit them, the fees? Okay.
It would only limit the tourism activity pieces.
So it's still...
Yeah, because the other is just allowed. We have no part in it.
Questions? No? No, okay. What's on? Where's our... Yeah. And so we didn't add anything, right?
So I might suggest, though, based on your discussion, that if you want to add compliance with the site plan and the proposed narrative, to have the acceptable or appropriate.
Okay. Site. And proposed narrative.
Make a motion to approve the conditional use permit for seven-three-three-zero-five mile based on the discussions of standards in section six-three-point-zero-six of the zoning ordinance with the following conditions. Site plan and proposed narrative.
Compliance with...
Compliance.
Oh.
Proposed compliance.
Okay, so I'm not going to throw a monkey wrench in this just because I did... I missed one of my notes. On page four, Paul, it says applicant has incorrectly referenced the maximum. So does that include your recommendations?
You know, you could include those recommendations as a condition of approval of the site. There are a couple of things that I know that they're like... Getting outside agents and...
Okay. All right, hold on. Okay. I think we need to add that in there. So we're not done with that. Because I have to get out there. Right? It's not that bad. Recommendations. These are the recommendations. If I get Health Department, I've got to make the corrections to the site plan. So we did this one. We just need to add... Does he... Should we just read the whole thing all over again?
Just the whole thing all over.
Yeah.
Motion to approve the conditional use permit for seven-three-three-zero-five mile based on the discussions of standard and section six-three-zero-six of the zoning ordinance with the following conditions. Site plan and...
Proposed narrative.
Proposed narrative.
And?
And recommendations of the...
Planner's report.
Planner's report.
That's it. And the planner's report.
And the planner's report. Sorry.
No, that's okay. Sorry.
Seven.
Okay. We'll do a roll call vote.
Ross?
Yes.
Tony Downski? Yes. My boss?
Yes.
Roel?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Okay. Old business items. The battery energy zoning ordinance amendment. Hi.
An application was submitted to update the zoning ordinance to create language that would regulate them out for battery energy storage. We did update the ordinance a few years ago to update the solar section of the ordinance and the wind section of the ordinance. Since that time, the state legislature has passed EA two-thirty-three, which would preempt potentially local zoning of some of these, what they're calling redoable resource energy facilities over a certain megawatt nameplate capacity. Again, my notes are not up here, so I want to say it's like fifty megawatts for battery energy storage, maybe a hundred. I don't know. You probably know. Fifty for so... So those all come in varying sizes depending on the technology. So we started to discuss this way back in March, I think, whether or not we would want to do local ordinance or we would just allow for that to go... To have applicants go to the state to apply for the permit there. At the time, there was no particular application in place. Since that time, an application has come in front of you. We did hold a public hearing on that three or four months ago. It's been discussed a couple of times. What we have in front of you now is a... What's considered a compatible ordinance that the township attorney has drafted for us using the MTA's sample ordinance as a basis for that recommendation. So that was given to you in your packets. We believe that this is a compatible ordinance. What the applicant had put forth was what was considered a workable ordinance. So it's not completely consistent with the state act and the state rules. I guess the contention would be that a workable ordinance is only as workable as the applicant thinks it is. So this particular applicant may say, yes, this is workable. We'll work with it even though it's not consistent with all the aspects of the state act. But we think that, you know, the next one that comes along may not feel that way. So it would be, if we want to do an ordinance at all, doing a actual CREEO or compatible ordinance would be the way to go. So that's what's in front of you now. There are also some additional benefits. And then we... We have a little more local control. They have to come to us first. If the developer challenges what we're doing here and they go to the state, if we disapprove it, they go to the state and the state approves it, we would potentially lose our ability to administer that ordinance. But we believe what we're putting forth is consistent with the state act. And in addition, for every new application that comes through, they have to pay some $2,000 per megawatt output. So that's a benefit to the community because then those dollars can be used towards public safety, fire suppression, et cetera. So that's where we are. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know a representative from the applicant is here as well.
Paul, can you... I think this is important for everybody here. Can you... There were... There's three different, in a nutshell, the three basic options that we had. Could you just state what those are so people understand what our options are? And then, of course, you know, which one were referred to?
So options...
Already said why.
Yeah. Options could be to do nothing. And that would allow applicants to just go directly to the state commission, the state energy commission, to get a permit. And if they meet the requirements of the state act, then they would be approved. And we would have essentially no say in it. They do have to hold a public hearing, I believe, but that's about it. Second option would be to do what I described as a workable ordinance, which may have some additional requirements over and above what the state requires. Again, that's only workable if the applicant, the developer, believes that they can work with those requirements. And the other case, in that case, they can still go to the state commission to get a permit. And then the third...
So that would be kind of like, we would create something and it's over and above. But if they don't like it, then they just go to the state. So that means nothing anyhow.
Correct.
Right, okay.
And then the last option is what we had in front of you, which would be the compatible ordinance that we believe would give you that local control, the ability to administer the ordinance and approve those claims, albeit the rules in that compatible ordinance are contained by the state act.
There is one difference, though. Right? And that's with the funding.
So there's funding. We also... It's my understanding that we can ask the applicant if they've exhausted all their other alternatives.
Other alternatives. And that's on the application. And so do we get to see the application that's been completed? So they fill it out before, and then they come back to us?
So the way the ordinance is written is that the board would create the application form, and they would use that application for the local...
So it starts with us and then moves forward? But we don't approve it or anything? We just have an opportunity to review it?
With a compatible ordinance, we would do the approval on the local level.
Oh, okay.
It comes to me... Tell me if this is right. At the advantage of us doing this, we can't make it more restrictive than the state. But if we have it, then they need to come to us first. And maybe we can be asking for certain screenings or certain this or that. If it's not too unreasonable, then they would most likely go, okay, we'll just do that instead of having the trouble of going to the state.
So there are still some questions about some of those things. And we're not proposing any of that right now. We're strictly going with what the MTA's model ordinance was recommendation. So we have not put in some of those things that are still hanging out there as question marks about whether or not we have the ability to do that or not. Some of that may get determined through case law or amendments to the act.
And so how does... When things change... So it sounds like it's incomplete. And then when things change, how do we know that they've changed? And if they say, okay, we don't want to deal with any screening or anything like that because it's not included, we don't have to. And then it comes back, like, things have changed. Do we just not get any opportunity to work with them?
So if there are changes in the application of this legislation, I think we're all going to be aware of it because we're all paying close attention right now to what's happening. And the playing field, I think, is moving a little bit just because there are so many unanswered questions. But come November, end of November, I believe, when...
They should be done?
That's when the state is supposedly going to start accepting applications.
And where... Just in general, where are the... Obviously, the most important things are health and safety things, though. You know, where these things are located. If there's a problem with them, if there's a fire, you know. So, you know, being downwind, upwind. Animals being close to... Is there anything that addresses that? I mean, so if we create an ordinance that's compatible ordinance, and let's say they want to put it wherever... Whatever's closest and financially doable to the substation, I guess. And somebody's got their barn right there, and they've got kids, you know, some sort of agritourism or whatnot. And then there's a fire and things blow that direction towards, you know, their barn, full of animals or whatnot. What happens after that? Like, what if there is a health problem? Who's responsible for that? Because we created it, but we have no choice but to create exactly what the state said. And then we all sign up and said, well, because we have no choice, we all signed it. Now we're all responsible for something that makes us uncomfortable? Or that is unknown, I should say?
I don't know that I could point finger at responsibility, per se. I think that there is some safety measures that are written into this language specifically for the energy storage. The recommendation from both the MTA and the township attorney under subsection three that talks about battery energy storage suggests that they have to comply with a certain fire code, NFPA fifty-five. It has to do with standards for installation for the energy systems, including battery energy storage system hazards and any... Excuse me. Applicable successor standards adopted by the Michigan Public Service Commission as provided for and legal reference. So I think ultimately, the owners of the facility are responsible to maintain those things in compliance with safety standards. If something goes wrong, just with any facility, I think the owners are going to be the responsible parties. And I'm not keenly aware of what exactly these safety standards are, but these are the ones that are being recommended by Michigan Township Association as well as our attorney.
So those NFPA's are in this, right? So we say we have to follow this. They have to follow that. Okay.
Could a developer offer additional safety standards, perhaps?
I was going to add a comment.
Sure.
I'm just going to point fingers once. I was to piggyback on what Paul said. The things like screening and things like that. An applicant comes through the township. There's no reason that just... Although it's not... It can't be... Maybe it can't be a requirement or a CREEO. That doesn't mean the discussion still can't be had. And a good faith developer would certainly be working with the township and addressing certain pain points to the extent they can. But like Paul said, if it goes to the state, then there's no forum for the discussion to be had.
Sure.
If there's no CREEO.
You guys know what we're talking about?
Are you?
I just started reading it, and it really sucks.
I don't think I want to know.
This is awful.
I don't think people understand how much energy are those batteries.
Oh, my gosh. So the main...
How fast it comes out.
To us, doing that is just a financial one?
It's financial, but I think, as Michael, right? Said, having that local discussion...
Actually getting a report is awareness. Told that something's coming in.
You may be able to ask a good faith developer to do more, and they may be willing to do it. Certainly, screening is not a thing that I think is out of the question. It's pretty simple. It goes along with the site plan.
The reality is that the... The reality is that the unknown somewhat process at the state level, we know it'll take a lot of time. We know it'll be costly and onerous and bureaucratic and at the state level. So the developer is still incentivized to work with the mansion. So even if there's some, you know, reasonable requests and conditions, those are usually a much smaller pill to swallow than saying, we're going to go to the state and deal with that.
That's what I was wondering. So does it speed up the process at all when it comes through us before it moves on?
I think that's the implication. I think that's what he just suggested.
Right, okay.
If it takes the state level, things might get locked down.
It's one of the things that would incentivize the developer to come through and work with the township as best they can under a local ordinance.
So in a nutshell, they make the rules. Can we do all their homework? But that's okay. We would like to ensure that the homework, that the homework is done, you know, and not-
Rather, us, we can work with them with screening, extra safety processes. Because safety, on this project here, safety is really big with me. And I'm sure it is with everybody. God help us if something happens.
Well, and we just, we don't know. We probably won't know all the safety things. I mean, we're just not going to know all that stuff, right? It's just going to wait until something happens down the road and then get it figured out. So that, all that stuff is out of our hands. The only thing that we really have is to ensure that everything is done and completed properly, which is hugely important. So somebody's not sitting at a government desk somewhere going, proved, proved, proved. And then if we can kind of screen it to make things a little more aesthetic and they're willing to go along with it, that's a bonus, you know?
No, definitely I'd rather work with these guys than just, like I said, just clean it down.
Sure, sure. And I guess location is hugely important. So especially where the proposed site is now, is in the backyard of some nice homes. And I think, what's the closest? Do you know? Do you, off the top of your head? Do you remember? I think you can throw it.
Yeah, I think they said it has to be by a certain substation. Is it a town station?
I don't have the project details, I think, on town site council, but Ben and Elliot couldn't be here today. So any specific questions that you guys want to know? Happy to pass them on. Make sure you get them.
Curious what's the setbacks from properties or homes. But he can probably answer that.
The setback from the property line is 50 feet. A setback from a home is 300 feet. The closest home to the property line of the subject parcel is 160 feet-ish. So-
Can you clarify for us if you guys are talking about tonight a proposal or a proposed ordinance? Because it's real un- clear to us back here. Is tonight on the agenda this proposal or the ordinance?
If, yeah, it's, it's the ordinance. But there is, there is a-
No, I understand. It just sounded like you guys were talking about the proposal. So thank you.
No, it's just, as far as we're talking about this, we don't have any limitations. I was just curious, is in relation to, you know?
Yeah, so the property owner who submitted the application, the particular property, the closest home is 160 feet.
160, but you said it has to be minimum of 300, right?
So the setback in that area would end up being about 150 feet from the property line.
Could I ask a question? Is there a setback from a waterway?
Is there a similar plan as the dump has to contain any water runoff from fighting a fire, potential fire there? It's going to wash toxin like hydrofluoric acid, which is like the number four controlled chemicals. There's a lot of lot that goes into this.
Yep, there is a lot. And you guys will have to do your homework on your own, unfortunately. And trust me, it's not that I don't, I don't care. I do care. We all care.
For those of you that haven't seen one of the batteries go up, I've been really close to one when it did. And it is scary. And this thing is going to be 100,000 times the size of that, 150 feet away from a residence.
Yep, yep. They grudge us all over it and encouraging it. So we have no say in any of that. That's why we were saying what we, why we're going this route. So at least we have some sort of information going forward. Okay.
Why is this?
Here's what it is. So this goes into effect November 29th, right? I'll do that publication. I don't have any questions.
Pam, are you guys going to tonight recommend or not recommend that the township adopt the ordinance? It's 100% agreeable.
Because of the tight timeframe?
Yeah. Are you guys going to do something tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We're trying to pull some of these things out that we discussed in some of the other meetings just so that's so that people have an understanding of how limited we truly are.
Well, since us got litigated, I don't know if that's true. That doesn't mean it's constitutional that you can put something 150 feet away from someone's house. So at least if we put an ordinance out and get on record and get it documented, we have the ability to go forward and file suit in the future.
And hence, the responsibility question for the unknowns down the road. Bob, any questions? Daryl, are you okay?
Yes.
Motion to recommend or approval of proposed zoning ordinance text amendment language to the township board.
So it goes to the board. So we'll do a roll call vote? Oh, we have a second.
Second?
Sorry.
The girlfriend?
Yes.
Maral?
Mary. You can call me whatever you want. It's okay. I know we were talking about it. Yes. Approved, recommended.
Okay, very well. Ross?
No.
No. Love and Delski, no. Two no and?
Free yes.
It fails a-
It fails?
It fails.
It's not the majority of seven?
Majority of seven?
You only got, you only got five.
Majority of five.
If it's three to two, it passes, guys.
Yeah, it's two no and three yes.
So we have a quorum, so it's majority.
We have a quorum, so this is approved.
And still, it'll still have to go to the board. They're going to, you know, even if it failed, it still goes to the board and they can help and everything. But it's always good to double check. We've got till 10. We've got 20 more minutes. Paul's making sure that our thinking is correct in case we need to make any corrections. Per the rules. Yeah. I've got that, too. I have everything. It's just a matter of finding it. It's not dead there, right? That's not what it is. There's the MTA book. He's going to need that because he'll find it way quicker than we will. He probably knows the answer to this. Can I get coffee, please?
Even with all the ratings?
Especially with all the ratings. Because of all the writing on it.
You have to choose.
Your scribble, my scribble. The pages are out of order. We didn't, we didn't adopt anything. So this says voting motions right on this side. We're not really- Is this, yeah? Paul, what is this? And we weren't looking at it. Okay, this is the question. Kind of a small topic. We're not amending anything. We would be adopting something, right? Are you looking it up?
What book are you guys referencing? Robert's Rules of Order? You have not adopted Robert's Rules of Order as a matter of course. Robert's Rules of Order are for parliamentary form of government.
Okay.
Or a republic form. Typically, boards operate under Robert's Rules of Order.
This would be in our bylaws then, right?
Yeah, that's what Bruce Miller was saying. You guys should look to your bylaws, not to Robert's.
Anne's, Anne's, great, okay. Making sure they both match up. I don't know.
What Robert's is sometimes used for, you're saying, is you have a motion on the table and someone wants to amend the motion. And it gets a little, you know that because you're the chair, it gets a little confusing. That's when you use something like a Robert's Rules. But I'm pretty sure your bylaws say that you have a quorum and it's majority of your quorum.
I normally have all that stuff with me, but- You believe? No, it's better to figure it out now before everybody leaves. Where did you, where did you see this, Paul?
It doesn't say explicitly that it would be-
Meetings or?
Yeah, so it's sections.
Voting? So it's a, well, I'm looking under 90. I'm 9.7, right? You said 8.1? No, that's the chair. Is this the most up-to-date one, too? Anne? Is there a date on it? Wow, okay. So this states that four members of the seven-member planning commission constitute a quorum, which we have, for the transaction of business, taking blah, 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 no official planning. A majority vote of the members present is necessary for a decision on an agenda item. An agenda item may be adjourned to a date certain for consideration by the commission. Affirmative vote of five members shall be necessary for adoption of a township master plan for any part or any part or amendment thereof. So for the big stuff, you need everybody. But for the other stuff, as long as you have a quorum, which would make sense so you can get stuff done. Okay. Very good. Thank you. Good call. Okay. Reports of commissioners, correspondence, board of trustee? Nothing. CBA? Nothing. Land preservation and conservation? Planning consultant review? You've been busy.
Yeah, I've nothing else to say.
Approval of the minutes of August 19th, 2024?
I make the motion to approve the saving township planning commission draft on August 19th, 2024.
All those in favor?
Two seconds.
Two seconds? Sorry. It gets a little fast. All those in favor of approving the minutes of August 19th, 2024, say aye. Oppose, none. Public comment? Chairperson comment? I just want to say thank you to everyone who showed up and thank you for contributing. And hopefully, we can start working and getting more people to, more neighbors, more community to show up because it truly is important. We're representative of you guys and we're doing our best. So the more we hear from you guys, the better off we all are. And Linda was correct on what the ordinance is. And she comes from one type of board, which is very factual and detailed, which is truly important. And it's, she's always here and it's very important. But we're a different kind of board. And to me, it's important that we do talk about these things. And sometimes they do get a little bit long. But when we throw everything out on the table, and sometimes you see something somebody else throw out on the table, it brings up another question. And we're just trying to be as thorough as we can. So I feel like sometimes the more we discuss and go back and forth a little bit, the better prepared we are to, for us, to make the decision in keeping in what our true responsibilities are. Sometimes we get a little off task out of curiosity, but- Sometimes we get a little off task, out of curiosity, but.
What Pam, the thing about what you do, is there were, there were people in the room that are opposed to someone you do, and they're, they've created an unreasonable expectation that you have the authority to say, put dust control on the roads. And, and that's why, to your point, there are some things that could and shouldn't be discussed, but there are some things that the audience, because they don't know, they need to know. When you look at the ordinance, the only thing under the one plan that you were talking about was kind of the entertainment part or the food part. It wasn't the growing, it wasn't the selling of those, of those items. And I think that that's, that's one of the things that you need to remember, your board needs to remember, even though you like to do business a certain way, the audience needs to understand what is it that you as the planning commission get to decide on, but what you don't? Because it wasn't clear for a rotted meeting tonight that, the whole discussion about the fire chief, he, do you realize he has no statutory authority unless he's at an emergency, emergency scene? None, under law. No, no, Mark was the fire chief 21 years. And so, and the con's a great question, Bruce and I were talking about that, it's really the insurance companies' risk, because that's a huge risk. But that's, that's the danger when you open it up, is you have laypeople here that don't know your ordinance. They don't know what you do and don't have authority over, and there's an expectation in the room that when it's being discussed, especially from the table, that you really do have authority. And that would be my caution.
I understand. Still kind of disagree, because if, there's seven of, generally seven of the stuff here. Somebody's gonna ask a question, right? We're not all gonna ask the same question, and sometimes we do get a little bit out of tangent, and then it's on me to reel it back in. When I start, when we start hearing about the roads, I'm like, here we go, we have nothing to do with the roads. And I knew, once we were talking about the fire chief and what his thoughts were, I thought, we don't want to go down that road because we don't care what his thoughts are. Not to being rude, but he has his job, which is dictated on a piece of paper. So sometimes what comes out of these things is an education of going down the wrong road and then correcting it. So that's my chairperson comment. We are adjourned at 9:46.
Keep me, I just wanted to be clear, I got no problem with what you, what you're doing, it's great. Michael only concerns.
Thank you, congratulations, you guys have been lucky guys.